From a business perspective, you come in and there's instant awareness. You have the gymnasium, you get a sense of the program rooms here in the corner, the atriums. But you get a feel for what's happening up above. And when you look above, you see that atrium base. And what you have above is a walking track and a jogging running track with some queuing. You have central and facility office administration. On time, wants to remove from the hustle zone below the people downstairs. So there are upstairs in green. You have a green roof terrace, future expand opportunity. Viewing areas go out there. And to the south, we have the group exercise fitness studio, we call self-directed fitness. And then the group exercise fitness studio to the right, which is more instructional fitness for aerobic, zumba, yoga, Pilates, et cetera, flexible room. You could even do down there. Shouldn't, I guess, I'd be if I didn't say use the gymnasium at off-hours during program for dances and aerobic things too, depending on how programs go. So wanted to point that out. And then some ancillary support space that helps the facility from ID and storage rooms and things like that. So that's really the kind of, ooh, I'm sorry. That's a good segue. So we're now we're to the exterior. Here's a line drawing delineation of kind of studies that we've done on building heights, uniform floor heights and things like materiality, but better conveyed in renderings. So to the left, we have the, what I call the main entry with the fitness and dance studios up above with the main entry and program rooms down below. To the right, you can see the gymnasium. We've done that from an economy of scale perspective out of precast and it's structural precast. So the team got together and started strategizing ways we can be more efficient, but yet keep the architectural integrity of the project intact. And I believe that rendering replicates how or demonstrates how we can do that. Here's another view looking at it from, I guess that would be the northwest to the gymnasium. So you get a sense of not only the entry in the gym in the far, but as you turn the corner to the general program wings. Another view looking at the main entry. A view from the gymnasium looking back to the main entry. And then from the rear, you can see the basketball courts, the plaza, the playground. Again, this is conceptual. It'll be further refined with the parking there and the outdoor roof terrace and the distance up above. The gymnasium having just limited fenestration, but corner and strategic fenestration, which will help with daylighting. Always a good thing from a sustainability perspective, energy conservation perspective. And then you kind of get a sense from it from the other direction. I guess that would be the northwest looking southeast with the program rooms. And again, I want to stress that that outdoor roof terrace will be structured such that you could build over it for the future. And our, from our perspective, any good project, any good planning project should allow for at least 10% expansion for the future because the only change we know is that there will be change and future needs can change over time. And so we should be accommodating for that. Sustainability, as we've gone through our checklist, I'm not going to read this whole list, but we've kind of talked about the six, seven principles of sustainable design following LEED guidelines. A lot of these are in engineering right now, so we can look back at it, but we're feeling very comfortable with what we've done from a sensitive land perspective, you know, previously developed property that's big in terms of you're not turning over new dirt and redeupping the property was already developed. You're actually mowing a building. Surrounded density in diverse uses is a very good positive. Access to plenty transit access to the trail sim, pedestrian vehicular opportunities in combination, island reduction because of the types of we're using as light refins. So it's sensitive to the environment from perspective, being roof is a time bonus plus. And then renewable popers are sustainable measure. Optimal energy use, high quality efficiency energy, HVA systems, building and low performance, including thermal resist. I got to start the natural dating on it because it's important and do things for the future. We're going to sign it for future older panel iteration, so we'll engineer it now so you can incorporate later. It would be, we'll structure that too. So you put it over the gymnasiums and natural for that. And that perhaps in the charging station. Protecting and serving water. We're just going to all low fixture and think that that's no critical to watlow. And then optimize building space, material use. So what we're talking about here is kind of looking at the optimal program, not only material, but program spaces themselves. Can programs flexible and multifunctional instead of dedicating a program space to one function? Utilizing recycled products, low EOV, enhanced indoor environmental quality. So we're talking about VOC, low VOC. And then commissioning and air filtration and air exchanges, optimizing on that. And then what this means at the end of the day is materials and systems that have low maintenance, low long durability and return on investment, you know? So this isn't a 10-year, five-year building. We're talking 30, 50-year facility at the end of the day. So from a history perspective, just an overview. So we were, when we were here with the conceptual design, we were at about 38,000 square feet, 17.8 million through many rounds of good public input back and forth with the board in terms of good input and dialogue. Then we moved on. You didn't see us for a while. We were planning internally, but what was happening in the economy since January is a very volatile economy. I'm sure you're all aware of it. It had a rate of increase that is basically unprecedented for, since the sixth, late 60s or, sorry, late 70s. So we threw, and we would do this anyway. We'd go through with it with staff, understanding all the desires, all the tweaks, and we moved ourselves to a 42,000 square foot building internally. But it was also priced at 24 million and we had to do a gut check on this. It was when our good friends WB Olson was brought on board to give us a pulse of the industry, and I'll let them speak to this a little bit later in the presentation, and an understanding where costs are now based on their inherent knowledge of projects and real-time costs. We were seeing the incline internally too, but we thought it was important that we vet the process through. We'd, so we had to kind of maneuver a little bit and bring ourselves back to something that's more attainable. We went to a 36,000 square foot building at First Pass with some early thoughts at 21 million, and then we came down to what we just showed you, roughly a 32,000 square foot building. When you bring in the track, I forgot to mention that, as an alternate, we'd structure it again. We'll bid the track and everything in the event that maybe the economy stabilizes a little bit. But right now that track is in the cost estimate out and it's at 32,000 square feet, 19.8 million. If you brought the track back into it, we're a little north of 35,000 square feet, which is pretty darn close to the 38,000 feet we show you in conceptual. And through refinement, in our minds, we always cut square footage through efficiency, not through loss of program or loss of space because that didn't happen. But of course, the track is in play. And now, you know, we're up against of here we are with that red dot and, you know, what kind of square footage are we looking at if everything just remains the same? I will talk a little bit about history where we're at in schematic design, early design development at 17.8 million. I will tell you that in all our work, we never, we never hit a budget right at schematic design because the expectations are high. Everybody wants to get everything they can out of that dollar. So it is a, a process of moving back and forth and understanding the pros and cons so you don't give away scope for the, for a fee, but then it's a delicate balance. You certainly can't be up at 24.0 million on a 17.5 million dollar project, right? So 19.8 brings us within striking range at about 12%. You know, you bid these things, you're 5 to 10%, you're kind of within range, but we need to have an action plan should things maintain and not stabilize, although the news was pretty good last Friday, obviously, from the economy report. So we hope for more of that for standardizing with inflation has peaked. We'll see. I don't know what that dialogue box is, but I don't want to mess anything up here. So cost savings, value engineering completed to date. I won't go through all this. Building cost strategies, we've done a lot of what I call system refinement, exterior envelope refinement, space efficiency, being creative with exterior materials and keeping ability that's a quality building with all the sustainable measures we talked about. We looked at the site. The biggest part of that, after we refined everything, was really doing what's necessary to support this facility from the onset and then creating the engineering such that we can bid it in a future phase. And there are some grant opportunities for that as well as alternative funding on that. I'll let Greg speak to that during the Q and A. And then we've even had some soft cost saving refinements in terms of FFNE and owner costs now that we're a little further into the project. So the process is we're right, we passed pre-design, we're actually past schematic design. We're into early design development, but we're showing you schematic design at this point. We still need to move through design development, which is a lot more engineering in all honesty and transparency. At the end of design development, a lot of things crystallize, a lot of these unknowns. We're holding design contingencies right now and things like that for documentation that isn't available. We get into construction documents. We get into, hopefully, at the end, we have a absolute understanding at design development. And at the end of construction documents, we get into bidding for no, you know, we don't have unexpected issues. We all have an understanding of the project. And when we work this process, it typically a bidding, there is no value engineering at bidding. The value engineering is here right now at this point in time. We're going to discuss options and this is the time we should discuss them in schematic design. So there are no surprises when the bids come in. Then construction begins after that. And our schedule is laid up there as a start to finish date and we're looking at 6-1. I wish I could move this dialogue box. Remind me later? There we go. 6-1 2024 and a grand opening or for use 8-1 2024. Is that right? No, not 2024. Oh, sorry. Construction starting in 2023, moving in 2024. My bad. So June to June, maybe a little bit of August with some training and operations. So final move in, our final operations complete in 8-1 2024. Costs. So as I said, WB Olson had, came onto the project. We slowed things up, waiting for them to catch up and give us the pulse of the industry and work as a collaborative team member. It's been good working with staff, engineering, WB Olson and the architects all collectively to make sure we're grounding ourselves. And I'm going to let a representative of WBO come up and talk to the next two slides here. Who wants to take it? Okay, Dave Ritterhoff from WB Olson. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So some of the factors that Tom already mentioned affect in the current marketplace, as everybody's aware of, you know, we're in a little volatile economy right now. Higher inflation costs, you know, there are some materials though that don't escalate as much as others. So part of the VE process that we've been doing over the last couple of months, you know, evaluating different types of wall facade materials, structural conditions between steel, precast plank, they all differ, they all differ a little bit in this current economy. So we're kind of exhausting all those options and trying to do, you know, put value into this project and to help lower the cost. So if we, go to the next slide? Thank you. So this is kind of a summary of the overall budget costs of 19.8 million. And it's split up into, you know, building costs at about 14.4, site work costs are about $2 million, general liability insurance and our construction fee, that's all per contract. And note that we do have a 5% design contingency included in our budget right now. Value is about $860,000. In this economy, I think it's worthy of all that 5%. We talked about it as a team increasing a little bit, but we're comfortable at this stage putting in the 5% contingency. And then the soft costs are recap there, professional services work just under 1.4 million. And then owner costs and F furniture equipment and signage artwork about 150,000. And that's totaling to the 19.8 million dollars.
Thank you, Dave. So options moving forward. And then when I say options, here's where we're going to be after I conclude this side looking for your input. Again, we're at roughly 12%. I know the number 2.3 million sounds more daunting than the percentage at 12%, especially when you think about a 5% contingency because if you're able to design down and able to get rid of that, then you got 7% that you're dealing with. And hopefully, we can realize some savings out of that. But in the event that we don't, we need a backup plan. So when we come back here in February, we can show you something that fits your bill and that we're not saying 2 point something million over at 12% over. And we're saying we're, best we could tell, we're on budget right now. You know, none of us are going to really know until the bids come through, but we've, we've had great success when we end design development with an understanding, a collective work, collaboration together, decisions made together and an action plan that gets us there. So I guess the most drastic option here would be delete the gymnasium, get well underneath the budget and have wiggle room. And I should also point out that whatever we do here, we would engineer such that you're able to bring this back, right? So we would bring all these through design development. We're not going to leave it alone now. It's, it's just worth talking about now. So as we strategize, we know how to come back should things be holding true and we're, you know, we're going to float these numbers out to subcontractors. So we're testing the marketplace with, as it is schematic drawings, we'll be testing it with design development drawings. Perhaps looking at the two program rooms to the north and deleting that, which takes away the roof garden and is a little less dramatic in terms of square footage, but obviously has program implications. I mean, everything here comes with heartache. We understand that. And, you know, in a, in a great perfect scenario, we don't have to do all these things, but I think we should have a roadmap to get us there. And perhaps there's things that we, these were first things that we considered collectively as a team. This isn't just the architect. This is speaking with, with program staff and your leadership here and talking to WB Olson. And I should also point out that there are additional funding options, you know, that might play into this over time. Or if you have it now, then that's a different discussion. If it's over time, it's over time. I do know that I'm hearing the park grants may be available this coming January. Who knows what the timing looks like? I guess from the election perspective, it looks promising that they can hold true to what the agenda has been downstate. And I can tell you about two projects that were able to get that funding. And as it turns out, it was for a gymnasium and for a group exercise program room. At Naperville, it was for a group exercise program room at the tune of 1.6 million Andrew or something like that. And at Woodbridge, it was for the third court gymnasium, the Mac Gym. And it happened right after construction. I mean, I know that's an optimal condition, but I did want to throw that out there and did want to really stress that it's important for us to hear from you and is there something that we missed here? Our next presentation would be in February of 2023, so not too far away, a little bit of distance, but it gives us time to put together our design development engineering, float these numbers out and get the right information from the trades and have WB Olson doing their work before they were in a catch-up mode. Now they're in a simultaneous mode with us. So as we develop things, we feed it over to WB Olson. So we're constantly checking the pulse. Thank you. Questions and answers? Are we supposed to take, I'm sorry, who do you want to moderate? President in terms of?
He's the, he's the president.
All right.
Okay. I have some questions.
Um, a couple of things. So I have a question actually for our manager. When we floated the bond, was it 17.5 million or we had 18.5 million?
We have a $10 million grant from the state. And that's 7.5 million dollar bond issue, which we have gone to market with. There are always costs with issuing new bonds. So I've already talked to Chuck about what are our options of the, cutting out the gym or program space is a pretty big, major alteration. You know, then the other, the other thing we have to look at is the market and, you know, is there, would pausing help? Probably not. But if you get, if you get, if you get the project done, I'm not saying this is possible, but if you could wait six months and get everything you wanted, would it be worth that? I have seen no reason to believe that's true, but you know, we have to look at a bunch of different options.
Um, a couple of things. First, um.
But we've already sold the, we have the money.
We have the bond and it's at, we've got a total of 17.5, correct? Okay. And then, um, the, the options, well, basically to get without the track, you're saying it's about 19.1, 8.8, 19.8. So you're talking about 2.4, 5 or 2. something that's above. I mean, where's that money going to come from? I, I don't see it.
I have not come up with that answer since Thursday.
Yes.
So, but we are looking at that and I talked to Chuck about it. And, and one of the big things is what does, where does a village stand if we borrow more money? Can we defer costs? We have all other notes out there in TIF districts and other things. So we have to look at the whole overall village financial status before we look at that option. I mean, obviously, if we could get, you know, another million or two in grants from the state, that would be great.
That's like, you know, pulling, I mean, we don't know. It's, it's a possibility and it's a possibility not, you can't necessarily count on that when you make your decision.
We did not, we put in several tickets for the lottery. We did not win. So that, that option is off the table.
I got a quick question. 19.8, is it with everything? So if we keep everything as is, it's 19.8?
Except the track.
No, the, yes, except the track, yes. However, you know, that's 5% contingency too. So, yes. So the track would still be an alternate. In other words, we wouldn't just let it go. We would design engineer it.
Mr. Patrick.
Thank you. Do we know what the last day would be to propose a referendum question on the April ballot?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can find an answer out unless, I mean, you work in other ones. You know? Yeah, I don't know yet.
We'll, we'll look at that, but they're closer may have already.
And, and what would be, what we want to pose if that is still an available option?
It would take us, I doubt we could get something together if it's, I mean, usually something like that is several months out. We have to have a.
It may be December. Maybe early December when the.
The petitions are due.
Mr. Slow.
Is there a possibility of utilizing like private investors? Somebody that was buying into the project and both funds? Is there that option out there that we know of?
I don't know how that would work with a public-private. There, there's always options for partnerships. There's, I mean, you know, just nothing to write down in pen, but you know, corporate sponsorship, private foundations. I don't think I'll get, it's going to be tough to come up with an answer really quickly, but you just, you never know. It's worth seeking other options.
I just want to know if there's a mechanism in place that you can possibly take that avenue, or if it's too mundane or too large.
When you sell bonds into the market, there are private investors who make bids on that. And the advantage of getting a government, buying a government bond is in most cases, if it passes certain tests, the interest, the, the money you make on the interest as the village pays you back, that, that revenue is tax-free. And so that, although there have been people in Washington DC who wanted to take that away recently. So that is why they tend to be, and they tend to be very stable, not very high. And so we get lower interest because we're very reliable and the interest, the money you make off the interest, if you, if you buy the bonds is tax-free. So that is a way we get money from the market. An ordinary loan can be done in certain circumstances. They're usually not quite as, for, for this gap funding, there's a whole bunch of different options. But that's something we really should, I mean, I'll talk to Chuck Moore, our finance director, Charles Howard, Chuck Howard, to try and come up with options. My, you know, my opinion, I'm going to just, is that I think you're on the right track of let's see if we can bridge that gap rather than let's build a eh rec center because it'll be a long time before we come back. And we got, we got bad luck. We, the village came together and decided to build a recreation center just before some unprecedented events in the market. And it's going to be tough, but we'll, you know, I don't have a solution tonight, but that we, that's the direction I think we've been looking.
Yeah, I definitely, and I think, I mean, we definitely want to try to get everything that we were asking for.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't have the program spaces, then, you know, we need community, higher community centers. And if we don't have the basketball court, that's, that was.
Yeah.
Professionally, the basketball court would be a real hard one for me as a professional to recommend to you guys. I mean, I put it up here. It's got a lot of value to it. You got, the program space is a lot of heartache and I get it, but you got program space, you got fitness space upstairs, you got flexible space. So it's not a wipeout. I mean, and I know you can rent gym space and things like that, but this is, Williams, I'm not speaking for staff or anything like that. So, you know, staff has a whole different opinion of this.
Mr. Slow.
I think that my opinion is we should focus our energy into saving what we've designed and put our efforts into coming up with that additional monies. It's not like we're, we don't have everything that we always talked about, but we had what we thought was the necessities to provide a nice community center and to change or lessen it than it is. Someone's going to suffer for their wants and needs. So I think that we should focus on finding it.
Mr. Cooper.
The external aspect, is that still the same?
So we have.
Because you only cut things out of the internal aspect as far as you see, except for parking.
No, we, for, you're talking about the exterior?
Exterior.
Yeah, so you know, it's kind of blurred lines, right? But no, we, we have done some economy of scale on the exterior. I mean, it's hard to kind of see it in the rendering, but that's what I was talking about earlier. Everything from that.
No, I'm talking about like the, the park and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the external, are those out or are they in the plan? Are they for the future?
They are, they are being designed and engineered and in the very near future. Greg, you want to speak to that a little bit?
So the question is what's happening externally at the same time? Have we cut all that first? Because to me, it seems like that could be put in easier in the future than the internal stuff.
And that's exactly what's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. So actually, when we first got together, Williams had shown in the renderings, the playground and the basketball court, but that wasn't part of the bill from the get-go. I have some special rec money that I'm saving for the playground. It's ADA accessible and it's appropriate to use that money for a playground. So I was planning to use that, that money in 2024 for the playground. Same with the basketball court, that would just come out of our parks operation in 2024. The also, the other thing is that we'd apply for another OSLAD grant because all those recreational amenities are, they check the box for OSLAD like we're doing for Lufkin Park. So we would apply for another grant. And actually, the OSLAD grants went up to, their top end is now $600,000 where it's been 400 in the past. So we would try to utilize, we would also have our money, but we'd also use utilizing grant money. Same with the baseball field. We'd redesign that, put in fencing, lighting, and hopefully that would, the OSLAD grant would be accepted and we can move forward. If not, we still have the money to do the playground and we'll budget for the basketball court.
And, and we are maintaining the existing basketball court, I mean, sorry, baseball field.
Field for now.
The one field.
Yeah.
So the external has already been cut. What you're saying is we still need to cut more internally.
Correct. Yeah, that was part of our thinking. And as I said earlier, we took away the storm water, underwater storm water detention and all the overland flows, but brought back what makes more sense now that we have engineers on board. It was a good. It was a good.
Because of the favors, you could do that.
Yeah, and the cross-section underneath that holds the storm water.
Uh, you talked about these grants that are coming out in Jan, that's in January. Those are Illinois grants, DNR grants?
Correct.
Um, so those can be applied for in January or can you start now?
Yeah, that opens up in January, right? So it takes typically, it's a three to four month process, sometimes all of six months before they start to award things and I wouldn't say it's a slam dunk. The OSLAD seems very strong, um, because of the, basically the story this tells and all the checkboxes you have throughout the system. Um, so based on talking to Michelle Kelly, who's one of the grant experts, she is pretty positive about this one and favorable for it.
But that's for the external.
That's for the external, for the site work, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't solve our internal issue.
No.
That would be the OSLAD grant, but the, the state grants?
The park.
That would be for inside, internal?
The park grant would be for inside.
For inside.
Uh, you know, that'll be competitive, so, and there's a lot of agencies looking for, for work, you know, to be done to their facilities because I know that they stalled them last time, they opened up a few, um, and here we are.
I mean, I don't, I don't see any harm in trying for the grants, but that's not definitely, it's not necessarily a slam dunk there, so.
No, all it does is give you a glimmer of hope if, if there are no additional funds and if you do have to make some hard decisions, that there's an avenue to get there.
When do these decisions have to be made?
Um, so we'd like at least your understanding, so as we're engineering, you know, if you had to go to something, what is it? And as we're engineering, we can work around it. Doesn't mean we're dropping it off. Like I said, we're taking it all the way through our next meeting. You'll see everything that you've seen here in further refinement, but we'll be forward thinking about it such that we don't delay the project if hard decisions have to be made at that time.
An example that I'll just bring up is if, let's say the gym is the element that maybe is in question, what we would do now with our engineers is start designing that interior wall as an exterior wall. We would still design the gym, but that way if you eventually have to decide to lose the gym, that, that wall would already be, if that was possible. I'm assuming that's an.
Yeah, yeah, and same, same goes with the program.
Same with the program.
Yeah, whatever the decision is, if there's no decisions, then, you know, the, the chip, the risk is we lose time when we get in, in February because then we're going to have to kind of work through it, if there are no additional funds.
Question for Director Gola, one, the ten million dollars, that has to be spent in a certain timeframe, doesn't it?
Yes, good question, President Kozon. The, uh, the grant, uh, we're supposed to be done in April of twenty twenty-four. However, when I was talking to the DNR, we never got the grant agreement. There was a lot of delays, so, um, they, we just got the returned signed grant agreement in July of twenty, of this year. Um, and when talking to the DNR, they said, well, we can't do any work, any construction, which we weren't at that point yet anyway, but they were saying we can't do any work, uh, until we get that signed grant agreement. So we should most likely be able to ask, ask for an extension until, uh, the end of, or end of summer of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, typically what we see is if you're showing that you're doing things and they can get an update, then they're with you and they're more amenable to giving an extension duty, especially these economic times and what's going on in the economy. If you're stalled in some conceptual phase, then, you know, it's at risk.
So would yours, the strategy that I was, uh, encouraging us to pursue is to let them know as soon as possible that we are facing some, okay.
Yeah, I think that, that would be good. We should get in front of them right away and if they need an info packet, which they will want, our drawing updates, we can give them, this is just our presentation, we've got engineered drawings and things like that, so we would share that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that note, that's.
We get.
Good.
Trustee Patrick.
Um, so I'm looking at your slide, factors affecting current marketplace, and you have a list of factors that are affecting it. Uh, and I would say pretty much all of these factors, six to seven months ago, were pretty much the same. So my question is, when you came to us in March with these ideas and these plans with the seventeen point five million price point, did you not take into consideration inflation costs or anything six, seven months ahead of time?
So no, we weren't forecasting seven months ahead of time in March.
Was that the timing of the presentation update?
I think we were, yeah, in February.
I thought, yeah, I thought it was February, but at, at any rate, you know, it started in January and it went up exponentially, everything you're seeing here, to a point where we're twenty-five to thirty percent and it didn't go as a constant month by month. It was certainly going at a higher rate of increase month by month. In other words, January was slower than February, was slower than March, April, May, and we didn't have WB Olson on board and we didn't have a practitioner in the field that had real-time costs. We were working with market, with architectural estimates. Um, we're trying to feel the pulse of the market and, you know, that's when we said we need to slow this project down internally, um, that was my note to my staff, so we didn't get too far ahead of our skis because we would have been at forty-two thousand square feet, um, until we can get some good accurate cost estimating information. I'd say most of our projects on the board all came to a realization around April, May in terms of the cost, the real cost impacts and what's escalating and now here we are in November, or almost November, or no, we are in November, and things are, things are kind of in change again. You know, I mean, some things have flattened off, steel is available all of a sudden, um, and concrete's going up and glass is going up, so it's, it's, it's just, it's changing every, every month, it feels like.
Trustee.
Yes, I would like to say that I am in agreement with Trustee Solella and Manager Harline. I would like to hear more from our financial director after an analysis of different financial options with the hope that we could look at alternatives for filling that gap before we start considering cutting out of the, out of the design.
Trustee Kummer.
Um, I have a question for the Olson team because they're, um, the price people. Um, so I want to know what your predictions are. Uh, it's great to say that costs are going up, down, up, down and moving in whichever way and keep going up, but the question is you come up with nineteen point eight million and it could shift again to twenty-one million and there's not this infinite source of money, you know, that we can pull from our present system. So the question is, um, what are your predictions? I would like to see a graph of what you expect inflation to be, what you're seeing, something that tells us, okay, if we plan for nineteen point eight million, why you're planning for that? Because twenty twenty-four, it may turn out to be twenty-three million, that same cost and then, you know, we're back in the hole and we're, we're, we're a project short. So, um, I really need to see a little bit of a, some kind of pictorial data that tells me, um, exactly what you expect your costs, what they are right now, um, why you expect them to be the five percent or whatever higher and, um, where that different costs are coming from in terms of, you know, it, the volatile economy, I understand inflation, what's the percentage right now that you're using to predict, uh, your consumer prices? I understand you can just use CPI, um, but that must be different for, uh, construction versus others. How are you getting this, you know, regression estimate? Basically, I'd like to see that.
The, I can't predict, I don't want anybody to predict right now what inflation's going to do. What we've been seeing is it's starting to flatten, but that's the whole number that you hear, the way the government reports it. Construction prices, uh, some have, have settled down, some have come back a little bit. Other ones that you didn't expect three months ago have gone way up. There's currently a cement shortage in the country, the price of concrete has gone way up. Uh, diesel fuel, which is a large component of all construction costs, has not really come down at all. Um, we, it's hard to say if it's going to, uh, so I can't predict and we can't predict what inflation's going to be and what the overall prices are going to be two or three or four months from now. What we've done, and we don't use, okay, say it's seven point seven percent is what the government says inflation is, that's not in our prices. What we've done and what Dave has done is gone out to the market and the trade contractors and asked them, if you're building this building at this timeframe that we're looking at, based upon what information we have available from Williams right now, which is very schematic, it's, it's narratives, it's a general floor plan, it's not details, what are you thinking this is? So that's where those prices and those costs are coming from. That's why we leave that, that design contingency in there. As they define design, you hope and you plan to try to design to where you're at and get everything in there, but there's lots of unknowns at this point yet that, that are very hard to account for. So, um, personally, I think we're going to continue to see prices stabilize. I don't think they're coming back. They're not going back to where they were a year ago or eighteen months ago. They're going to start to flatten out and we'll start to see that, I think, across a lot of the construction materials, not all, because there are still supply issues out there. Some are driven from, uh, international things, uh, chips and, and components that come from overseas. Some are driven, a lot are driven by labor shortages in the country. I mean, you hear all the time that there's four million job openings and there's only three million people looking for, for work. Uh, we can't find enough in construction especially. There's a, there's a tremendous labor shortage for the trade contractors. That's driving it up. Labor prices are not coming down. They go up every year. There's labor contracts that are due, that are, that come due in, at the end of May, uh, in twenty twenty-three and the first talk on a lot of these is that they're going to ask for more than they previously had been asking for because they've missed this run-up in inflation.
Yeah, just to add to Dan's comments, that's, that's an important point because when, over the last sixteen months, we've had a, you know, a more difficult time than normal trying to grasp the inflationary measures in our economy right now. So what we have done, um, is that we make out a company policy to go out to the marketplace and collect trade contractor pricing at this budget level. I think it's important to go out there and get current marketplace conditions, cost for materials, um, and then it also helps with value engineering, cost savings to, to start that process and to help reduce those costs by looking at alternative materials, which we have done during this phase. So getting trade contractor input in this schematic timeframe right now is really, you know, it's a huge advantage to drive, help drive down the price. Um, but I think to reiterate what Dan said, that the inflationary measures in this economy, I think we've peaked. I think we're close to peaking in material prices, but some, some items have gone up over twenty percent in the last two years, right? So you're starting to, to have those ones that really were elevated to start receding a little bit, but now you're dealing with cement shortages. Uh, fuel issues have come down, but I, I don't know if they're going to stabilize at this point or not. So what we like to do is gauge out to where, you know, this project is starting in June to include those in our budget, um, but there's going to be some surprises maybe over the next couple of months where that contingency will be used. If it's not, we're going to rinse that out in the next design development budget and, you know, the prices will be adjusted at that time, but I think it's a good contingency to have at this time.
Okay, I think we've got a lot of unknowns here. Um, what I'd like to do is both, um, manager and then, uh, with our staff decide how we're going to go forward with the budgeting with money-wise. If you guys can kind of tighten up on a few things and then we'll come back at our next COW meeting and then hopefully try to make a decision at that point. I think right now it's, it's really, you know, no good to make any kind of decisions to make.
Trustee Kozon.
So there's a part of me that feels like we were sold a bill of goods. At, uh, March fourteenth, we voted to get this rec center going. That was eight months ago. I think your contract price as the architect was something like one point six million and it goes up based on.
I think it was delineated in here, one point three, four, whatever. It was up on the screen.
Okay. Um, but this was only eight months ago. Inflation is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven percent. We're looking at, right now, before we've done anything, thirteen percent higher than what we were looking at eight months ago. Um, we don't go for bidding until what, uh, May of twenty-three? Building starts are down. If building starts are down, there's less building going on. I feel there's been a labor shortage in construction and different projects that I've been putting together since twenty fifteen, like labor shortages in, in construction always has seemed to have been there. It's not just recent, in the last eight months. So, I mean, maybe I'm misinterpreting, but, you know, I can't help but feel and I've had this response from some other people too, that it's, you know, we were sold something and now eight months later, we're being told, get ready because you're going to be over budget and what you really wanted is going to cost a whole lot more. Um, I don't know if that's a bait and switch or if it's totally economic factors or maybe a little bit of both and where we are in the economy is just, you know, leans towards the excuse of it all. I think that what our village has voted on and what we want as a village in a rec center should stay that way and I think we really got to get down to not hypotheticals of what maybe this will cost and diesel prices are up and whatever excuse we want to make, but really get down to what's this going to cost and let's try to, let's try to lock some of this stuff in and, and get some real numbers instead of just kind of grooming everybody for continuing to spend. We're at seventeen point five is what we agreed to, now we're at about twenty million in February, you know, is, is the pricing after you've spent a year looking at it now going to be twenty-five million? Um, the whole thing just leaves a very bad taste in my mouth, eight months after we voted it in, that we're already thirteen percent over the cost that we were sold as a community.
Well, if you'd like, I can certainly respond to some of those. If not.
Yeah, if we could make it quick.
Sure. So we were in conceptual, early design when we presented a project in March. It was at the beginning of a contract, okay? We were working with historic numbers, our database is good. This is not a seven percent increase economy in construction, I think you heard that. Maybe it's a national increase and you have your experience on public projects, it's more than seven percent that we've been seeing across the board. This is unprecedented, that, what, what we're experiencing and I will tell you that we're here committed to you. We're not selling you any bill of goods. We, we want nothing more than the whole project to happen. That's, to me, the ultimate project is our success, right? So I don't want to go backwards. I'd be glad to take this to marketplace as it stands. I would just say then be prepared, if the numbers coming over at the bid time, decisions are going to be made then and they're going to be a little more difficult. That's true value engineering. This is in the spirit of collaboration when we work with the board like this, when we work with staff to get input together collaboratively such that we can find a path. If that means extra funds, that means extra funds. If that means looking at things a little differently, we'll look at things a little differently. This is on our work, right? So we don't work as efficiently when we have to stall and digress and think like this. We work more efficiently when we have a path to the end. And, um, I'm just here to tell you that we're absolutely here and committed to you to bring this in on budget and give you a great project.
Trustee Kummer, last question.
Um, I actually have a question about when can you lock in prices for labor and other things and when does that happen in this process? Because my fear is, as I said, this economy is volatile and I, I assume once you get to a certain design stage, you're going to start the process of building whatever and you need to have some locked costs at one point. It looks like this, this target might keep changing otherwise.
There, there is a way to get, and I'm speaking on your behalf, WB Olson, but I know we do this as a team, there is a way to get early numbers on things that we know have stabilized. We feel confident about our engineering, we feel confident in our plan that it's not going to change. We can go out to bid on those things that help the project. I think we're having early discussions about that right now, um, and we will procure those, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important to lock some of the numbers at this point because that solves the overall increase in prices that if you're just sitting there waiting for a target, that's, you know, could be moving every twenty seconds, that you don't want, you want to lock. And I think that's, that's their job actually to lock the prices. That's what I, I'm assuming.
I mean, it's a publicly bid project, so.
Project, but that's, you know, they're the intermediary that works on that with, um, to lock. to lock certain prices. Because I think the locking and choosing a bid contractor at a low price is going to be essential to getting the most out of this project, because otherwise this target is going to keep changing.
I mean, and there's a duration of lock too. I don't want to get into all the horror stories on that. Some people aren't holding their numbers, quite honestly, unfortunately, in some trades, but others are, and we'll have to work together collaboratively to see what the right packages are and make a recommendation to you on that, because you would have to approve that.
Okay. Okay, so.
... as it's trying to do, that should make people want to look for more work, should drive the prices down some. I mean, it's not my experience or historically that it's going to drive them down 13% unless...
You never know. Things drop real quick, you never know.
A major change that I don't think anybody wants, or its implications to that public change. I mean, we're hoping that happens. I think the thing to do is continue forward, get the design developed a little more so that we can go get better numbers, more accurate numbers, knowing what things are really going to go, and continue to drive the process.
Yeah, like I said, we will be back here in February, so that's, you know, three months, four months plus of work, activity, engineering, and development of documentation, as you see the plans, for better number sourcing.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your time here. Okay, we will now move to item 3B is Lake Shore Recycling System Solid Waste Contract Update. Current village contract with Lake Shore Recycling expires end of June 2023, and we may seek an extension or proceed with a request or proposal.
We have with us George Strom and Katie Neary from Lake Shore Recycling Service, and they were kind enough to give us a tour of their recycling facility. They are the current contractor for solid waste management services in the village, having purchased the contract from Roy Strom. And I'll turn it over to George.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. My name is George Strom, Vice President of Municipal Services for LRS. I was a family member of the Roy Strom Company that was acquired by LRS about two years ago, and then I also have Katie Neary with me here as well. She's a Municipal Services Manager, so she's part of the LRS team as well. But I'll keep this as quick as I possibly can, because I understand the last one was a little bit, a little bit long, and this one, we're going to deliver some positives, some tangible things that we can walk away with that are good for the community. So just wanted to give you a quick backdrop on the changeover from Roy Strom to LRS. I know that currently still, in the community, you still see some Roy Strom vehicles. It's slowly transitioned over to LRS, but obviously, you know, it fully hasn't been integrated. A lot of the LRS communities, when they're new, they'll get new flyers, they'll get new education material. It provides kind of a good area for the residents to get comfortable with the hauler. So I think there still is a lot of confusion, residents not sure exactly who the hauler is. It's Strom, it's LRS. I don't really know, because my bin doesn't say anybody, it's my own bin. So those are some of the things that we want to address and move forward together to make sure that we can ensure the residents of Villa Park understand who their hauler is and what the servant expectations are. So really, just to go briefly over your current program, so you can make sure that we're all on the same page. So one of the unique things about the Villa Park program is it is a legitimate take-all program. A lot of communities now have, you know, cart-based programs or anything outside of the cart, you have to pay for, put a sticker on, and you end up potentially paying a lot more if you have a larger family. So the positives about the Villa Park program are you're allowed unlimited waste and recycling, you have the free bulk pickup every single week, you also have the free brush collection all the time, and you have the free leaf collection in the fall. You do have a kind of a modified pay-as-you-throw, which is the yard waste sticker program. So if you have the bags or cans, you do put a prepaid sticker on those. But the other part of it that I think has been really good over the, like, last several years, we added in a $10,000 electronic waste credit and the annual paper shredding event. So that pretty much funds the recycling extravaganza that they have here every single year. And then the one downside, I think currently, that the program does have is residents have to provide their own waste container. So we get a lot of calls, residents upset about broken containers and things like that. You can see in the picture, we use, in many cases, that split-body truck where, you know, the driver's manually dumping your can in the back of the truck, one side in the waste bin, one side in the recycling bin. And that tends to, over time, cause more wear and tear on your containers than you probably would if you had an automated cart system. So I really want to just talk about some of the current program challenges that you have with the program. At the time when this was put together, it was really a great program for the community because we had the split-body concept where residents were able to put their materials to the curb. Not a lot of the communities locally were carted yet, so it was really kind of a cutting-edge program, because you could kind of remove, quote-unquote, "a truck off the street." But one of the things that we do now get is a lot of residents complaining about mixing the waste and recycling. So as the education changes, meaning if it's bagged, a lot of times the drivers are told to throw the bagged material in the garbage, because it's not necessarily going to be recycling side of that bag, and we're trying to make sure that we're getting good quality recycling in our processing centers. The store-purchased containers, as I mentioned, tend to break a lot easier. If you actually look closely into one of these pictures that I have up here, the cans that he's dumping are cracked, and that does tend to happen quite often in the winter when those plastic containers get brittle, and they're banging them on the side of the truck to get all the material out of there. There are also smaller containers. So in this program, you have a 35-gallon container or smaller that you have to use, which the normal standard now that we tend to use in an automated carted program is 96 gallons, 95, 96 gallons. So some of the residents could get a better quality of life potentially by just only having to roll out two bins, one trash, one recycle bin, rather than two, three, four, five containers every single week. The other part of it that I think kind of brings out a lot of the challenges, and we've done a lot of ride-alongs, you'll see the unlabeled recycling bins and the recycling containers. So when the driver pulls up at a home, they don't actually know what you interpret your recycling bin as. So they're more or less guessing in a lot of instances, what actually is your recycling bin?
Your father actually patented one of those split hopper vehicles.
Yeah, my dad was very adamant that he loved, he loves this technology. He designed and patented quite a few different of the split trucks. So he would be upset if I was saying, "Let's get away from the split truck," but I'm my own man, so. Yeah, so just to kind of, to play a quick game here, I wanted to kind of just show the view of the driver. So these are pictures that we actually took from the view of the driver. What is the driver seeing when he pulls up to your house currently? And what would you decide if you were the driver? And what would you think was recycling, and what would you think was garbage? I know we're kind of on a smaller screen here, but if you get close up to it, a lot of the bins do not have recycling labels on them. They don't have anything that really allows you to understand what is exactly the resident trying to tell me. And so when we get a lot of the calls, then residents are upset, saying that we're throwing their recycling in the garbage. It's not something, either A, we're doing on purpose, or B, the driver is looking at what he's been trained to do, which is try to get clean recycling into the truck. So if he's pre-cycling, which what I call is he's sorting at the curb, he walks up and he sees, to his best judgment, everything is in bags, well, maybe they don't have any recycling here, I'm just going to throw it all in the garbage. So really, what I think is, as a driver, it makes your job really a bit harder to be, to be deciding on the fly at every single house from a different bin, on which one's waste and recycling. I know that the community here is very, very forward-thinking when it comes to sustainability, so I really want to make sure that we put our best foot forward as a community to look to give the tools to the residents to recycle in the most proper fashion. So really, I think that, obviously, I mean, we have always dropped off and provided free yard waste, free recycling stickers at Public Works, but I think also a lot of residents don't know that they're free and they're available for them. So then another challenge with the containers, they do break quicker. So they only may last, you know, a few years. So if you think about three cans at your home, $25 to $30 a bin, and those three bins break every few years, it adds up over time. So just giving you some, some things to think about, and maybe how could we improve the program? So I want to say Villa Park's waste and recycling future. So here are some really good pictures of what a lot of the communities that we service look like today. What I think, cleaner, safer, sustainable, and it's convenient and it's affordable. So what I mean by that is trying to push for a carted program in your community. It's something that we looked at the last time we did the renewal, and I think the community was a little bit nervous about thinking that we're going to stray too far away from the roots of the unlimited program. Well, realistically, we want to push just towards a carted program and keep a lot of the benefits of what you have currently. So what we're looking at for a future proposal is continuing with the unlimited take-all program. Exact same thing that you have today, you know, keeping that $10,000 e-waste credit to fund that big event, keeping the shredding event, but also then providing an LRS collection cart. So what I mean by that is a 96-gallon cart, that's three times bigger than the current container that you would allow. So think about that tonight or tomorrow when you're putting out your garbage bin. You have to drag three cans out at the curb for your trash bin. Now you would just roll one of them, you know? And then the recycling cart, we could look at either a 96-gallon cart if you wanted to have the same size, but in a lot of communities, we do a little bit smaller, which is a 64-gallon cart. So if you decided, hey, we want to go with the same-sized trash and recycle cart, you could do that as well. But a 64-gallon tends to be the industry standard when it comes to recycling cart. So that would in some instances triple to go up four times. A lot of people have just a 12-gallon tub at their house, and that 12-gallon tub, once it's full, a lot of people start to think, well, my recycling bin is full for the week, so I'm throwing the rest in the garbage. And then also, they don't have a lid for their recycling tub, so the recycling tends to fly all over the neighborhood, or when it gets windy, those tubs go three blocks down, and then people get upset that we threw their recycling tub in the garbage. So what the goal is, is really to beautify the collection day. You know, years ago, we used to have a five-day collection program, and the village had said, "Why don't we go to four days to have one day where there's no garbage cans on the street?" Well, I think when you would see how nice actually the cans look once it's rolled out in so uniform, that as a retailer, you would, a realtor, you'd be happy showing homes in Villa Park any day of the week, no matter if the carts were out or not. So I think it also helps to deliver reduced costs to the homeowner, because, you know, while this may significant, or insignificantly increase the price to help cover the cost of the cart, it does help to reduce the cost, meaning your use of that cart is guaranteed for 10 years, and if the cart that you have from LRS ever breaks, we replace it for free. So I just wanted to have Katie talk about the resident education and the cart rollout. So this is, I think, where the Roy Strom to LRS kind of is challenged right now, meaning we want to reintroduce ourselves as LRS to the community, to say goodbye to the Strom brand and introduce the LRS brand officially. And so she's going to spend a few minutes talking about that, and then I'll just wrap up so we can go over some quick Q and A before we close out.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. So I'm just going to pass this. This is kind of an example of one of our brochures. I just wanted you to get an idea of what the quality of it is. So I've been fortunate to be a part of a multitude of transitions from this type of a program that you currently have to a cart program, and I can tell you, residents absolutely love it. You know, you're always going to have a handful that will be a little grumpy about it, but even they tend to turn around, and we're very flexible as well, so we're able to handle the issues that come up in transitioning to a cart program. But we are truly experts at doing this. I myself have been a part of about 30 of them. We have lots of different education tools that we use as well, and that will, you'll even benefit from the carts. We use them as tools as well. So we have a dedicated Villa Park webpage that we'll create, so that residents, it'll be a part of that brochure, there'll be a QR code on it and everything as well, so residents can go on. We'll mail that out prior to transitioning to this cart program, probably a couple months, generally, and just be, you know, very informative and work with the village on communicating as well. On the webpage, it'll have educational information. We have like recycle information. We always get asked, like, what's recyclable, what's not recyclable? And we'll have printable documents online, as well as links to like our customer service email, or just a chat box that they can talk to a rep, and then links for other services as well. So once, you know, we mail this brochure out, it will give information on the actual cart deployment, so we'll be clear on exactly what to expect, what to do with your old containers and all of this. So you see at the top, it's got the recycling guidelines. So this is one of our stickers. I think we have a couple, but maybe this is our newest one. So, you know, recycling has changed drastically in, over the years, and contamination is always an issue. One great thing, if you're not aware, LRS has always been a domestic recycler. I'm super proud about that. We have only recycled our, everything that we collect from your homes goes straight back here into the Midwest. And the reason why we're able to do that is because we have the most state-of-the-art facilities, hands-down, probably across the United States. We were founded as a recycling company, and, you know, it has literally changed the way the Chicago area now does recycling, and you will see our competitors now upgrading their facilities to kind of compete with ours, but we're already moving on to the next and the better, and the next better ones with some new ones that we're opening. And what that means is, when we sort the materials and it comes in, we can, we can, our whole entire process, from the people that we have and the way that we do everything, basically makes so that the residual that comes out at the end is just garbage, and we're capturing all of the recyclables and the product that we're giving to the buyers who are buying it, or in this case, lately, selling it to, or not selling it, they're actually worse, what am I trying to say here? We're paying for it now, because the recycle market is, it fluctuates quite a bit, but it's very clean product. So we don't have contamination, and a lot of people think of contamination like, you know, you got, sell pizza in the box. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, you know, just mixed recyclables going into a bale, and it turns out, then it has to be processed different at the end, and there's more labor involved. We don't, we don't have that. So the recyclables we're capturing are being handled with the best care possible. That sticker at the top will go on to every single recycle cart, and it's very basic. It just says, you know, your metal, your plastic, your glass, your cartons, your paper, and how we want it, clean and empty. And then below, the very common items people mistake, like your plastic bags, and we even get dirty diapers. So, and then below, you'll see an example of our carts. I know George had mentioned the 95-gallon for garbage, and so it sounds intimidating to some people who may be accustomed to small, tiny, tiny things, or they think, "Oh, my gosh, I can't move that." But actually, those carts, even though they are big, they're extremely sturdy, and they're very lightweight. So they're very easy to move. They have a handlebar on the back, wheels, the lid is hinged, it's flip-top, so it's very easy. And then you'll see on the upper right-hand corner there, where they're dumping, you know, the cart into the bucket. And the nice thing about this program, if we go to it versus the rear load, is there's a net that actually goes over that bucket on the top, and so when it flips up, nothing is getting out. So right now, I was privileged to go with Matt and Michael and George, and even meet some of the residents while we're out here, who were very welcoming to the idea of carts. But we got to see what was actually happening out there, where, I mean, there is stuff just flying out all over the place. And so this program, hands-down, in my opinion, having done a multitude of these, is a great opportunity for Villa Park, and the residents will love it.
Thanks, Katie. Well, just really quickly to wrap up, so really moving Villa Park forward together is my thinking on the way to close this out. One of the great opportunities that the village could take advantage of currently is working with LRS for a recycling cart grant. So recently, we partnered with, it's a foundation called The Recycling Partnership, and they're funded by a lot of the Bottlers Association, and their objective is to take communities that are not currently carted for recycling and fund up to $15 per cart for the community. So that just helps basically to knock down a little bit of the purchase price for us when we go ahead and purchase those carts, and then we're able to pass that savings on to the customer. So that means the village resident would save about a quarter a month than what they're potentially going to be paying in the future. So that, I think, is really, really critical, and we were awarded a grant in LaSalle, was the first one. So there is, there is funding available. I can almost guarantee that we would get that grant, because this is such a great opportunity. So if we are able to work together on that, then obviously, we're looking for staff to be recommended to continue to work with LRS for the next five years. It is traditional that once you have these kind of carts set out, that you would go ahead with a five-year renewal, which is in your current agreement, to then help offset the cost of those carts for us, so we can keep the price lower for the resident. And if we're able to move forward with a renewal, then we would like to start this as soon as possible. My goal would be to hopefully get this approved, so that way in early spring, right when the snow kind of fades away, we can deliver these carts and let the residents see kind of a full year of great waste and recycling services, of uniform collection, and hopefully some cost savings when it comes to container replacement. So I appreciate your time. So I appreciate your time. I thank you for the time. I know that you're running a little bit over schedule here, but I would appreciate any questions if you did have any for me.
Sure. Trusty Kumar.
Okay, so we, does this mean that the carts would have kind of a 10-year warranty? And this, the cost of the cart, would it be spread over a year, or how does that work out?
Yeah, so, so the carts have a 10-year warranty. So really, if anything breaks on the cart, you know, we replace it. There's only a few instances where maybe the resident would have to pay for it, like if they lit it on fire, which has happened in the past. They dump coals in there, you know, from a barbecue, and the thing melts. Even in most cases, we don't even cost, you know, charge them for that. But no, it is 100% covered. They just would need to call us, and then it's replaced within seven days or so.
And your old garbage cans and stuff, what do you do with that?
Yeah, so the nice part about that is, considering you do have that yard waste program, what I would recommend first off is to let residents know, if you do have yard waste, then you don't put them in bags. You know, please feel free to continue to use your waste bin for bags, or for yard waste, and if you don't want to use it for that, then just go ahead and put a piece of paper on there that says, please throw away, and we'll throw it away. Or we've in the past recycled those as well. In Darian, we just recently recycled all of their recycling tubs, and so we did that as well. And then to your point on, it is spread out over the five years, so it's really a minor impact to the resident when it comes to paying off the carts. And another part that I want to provide clarity to, was I know that currently in our program, there's a little bit of nuance that I forgot to comment on, is during the free leaf season, right now, it's bags only, and then residents have to put a sticker on the plastic can. We did have a little bit of conversation about that, so that's something that we want to eliminate, so that residents could use a plastic can without a sticker, or a craft bag during that time without a sticker as well, because I know right now, it provides a little bit of confusion to the resident.
One other question about, now, you're gonna, different houses have different needs in terms of their garbage impact, obviously. Not every house is the same size in Villa Park. We go everywhere from like a one-bedroom, a little house, to, you know, really large houses. So how are you going to address that, in terms of how much, you know, they need in terms of cart?
Absolutely. So we, we will give a default-size cart, 96, 64-gallon. That's how it would be most likely, unless the village would like something differently. But as the program has been set up, and it seems to be administered, because, you know, Villa Park tends to be normally, you know, a family-oriented community, they want to provide a good cost of living. Right now, the, kind of the funding for the program is spread out evenly amongst everybody, whether it's a one-unit versus, you know, 10 people in the house. And, you know, that's something that could be addressed in the future, but the nice part about it, I think, is that it does kind of share that cost amongst everybody, so it keeps it relatively low, versus if you've got, you know, you know, five or six people in the house, it could be $6 or $7 more if we came up with a really aggressively low.
No, the question I have is, if there's an option, is there an option to purchase your own cart from LRS?
Oh, if you want to get an additional cart, it's $3 a month.
I mean, so we can negotiate how we do that. The question is, and one of the questions for this board is, how do you want to, first of all, do you want to give us the authority to go ahead and negotiate a five-year extension without going out to an RFP? And I just want to get this in while we're on the topic. The process of putting together a full solid waste RFP, evaluating and getting it done would be very difficult at this point. Should I have brought this to you three months ago? You could make that argument, yes. But, so we can do that, and that is an op, this is like the last, we still have the chance to do that. Of course, LRS would rather we didn't do that, but, you know, I mean, they can compete against the other companies as well as others. But one of the things is, how do you want to socialize the cost? We have a sanitation department to keep the city clean, the village clean. So the number-one thing about trash service is to make sure people throw their trash in the proper containers, get it picked up, and they don't throw it out in the ditches. Now, my neighbor puts out about a 15-gallon bag a week. She puts out a little trash bag, and that is the same thing almost every week, whereas we're filling, would you put three, four times that much out, and the neighbors across the street, another, twice as much as we do? We're all paying the same rate. We could set the program up where everybody is, has up to two carts, or up to three carts, but again, you're spreading that cost among more people. So you could go to a three, you know, those subtleties we can work out, but the main thing is, tonight, is direction on whether you want us to go out to a full RFP, because if we, if you do, we need to get on it like a while ago, a month ago. And if not, I think that, I will say this, I'm not trying to do an ad for LRS. I didn't know who they were three months ago, but what I, the research and talking to them, they didn't own a landfill until, what, a year and a half ago?
Yep.
So this is not a trash company that also does recycling. This is a recycling company that has learned that the most efficient way to run their business is also at a landfill, because that's, if you don't own your own landfill, you're at, you're, it's basically, you could, it's almost a legal extortion.
If you don't own a landfill, that's why my family sold. Be straight away, I mean, we didn't have a landfill. All the, the industry has consolidated to really three haulers, national haulers, and then there's LRS. So just to give you a quick kind of update, I mean, realistically, there's not a lot of independence left in the market, and...
And if you want to get one hauler to do a whole comprehensive plan, that's probably our best option. I would say that we shouldn't go any more than five years. Five years will cover their costs, and then we can, you know, ideally, we'd, you know, if I had my brothers, I'd have another year, and I'd get an RFP together. I think that would be the perfect way to do it. Our contract ends in June. They aren't going to agree to a one-year extension, probably. I mean, we could ask, but a five-year extension, we can switch to a cart program and try that. I will tell you that almost every other vendor, unless it's a small hauler, like a Flood Brothers or something like that, they're going to want to go to a cart program, because it's just, you know, it's, it saves costs in workman's comp, it's much more efficient, and there are so few players now that it's hard to get away from that. So that's, that's, that's my preference, but, you know, I work for you guys, and, and we will get it done if you want to go the other direction. So that, trying to, yeah, I'm sorry. Trusty Murphy.
Yes, my question, I have two questions. One question, we recently have, in all honesty, been getting some negative feedback from residents with respect to collections and other things related to picking up of the garbage and the handling of the cans. I would like to anticipate, but would like your confirmation, that these are a result of the transition between Strom and LRS. The question is, do we have a commitment from your team that we're going to be able to work through the issues that the residents are bringing to us now, and we'll see an improvement in that? Because if we're going to anticipate that on a going-forward basis, that would negatively impact the decision. The second question I would have is, do we have the option to do the five-year renewal and keep our same buckets, or once we commit to the five-year, we're committing to switching over?
Sure, so I do appreciate you bringing that up, and that was one of the main reasons why I showed the pictures of the containers. A lot of the, a lot of the trucks that they have started using, because these split-bodies are kind of like phasing out, they've kind of started introducing the automated equipment without getting the proper carts. So a lot of the residents may feel some discomfort from them switching this automated truck before they really should. So right now, if we have damaged bins, we replace them without any cost. So ideally, or this would be fixing that problem. And if any residents continue to use the same container, and they would like to, absolutely, they could get serviced with that. They can opt out when they would get this mailer, say, I don't want carts, I'll just use what I have, that's fine. We would hope that they would probably see the neighbors using them, then call a month later and ask for them. Seems to be what happens.
And I think we need to explain that if you're putting stuff in bags, it's gonna, we're gonna, you guys, for efficiency's sake, are going to have to assume that it's trash, besides their process is not set up to de-bag.
Yeah, if, if anything is bagged, I mean, it is commonly looked at now in the industry as it would be throwing the garbage.
I think my bigger concern is people calling and saying that their trash didn't get picked up, and they called on a Tuesday, and they didn't get back till Thursday, or their whole block has been skipped for a week, and things happen, and they don't happen every week. The question becomes, how amenable are you to your customer service and working with our staff when we call and we have these types of issues? Is this going to be something we see on an ongoing basis, and is there going to be a challenge going forward? And that's really more a working relationship in a decision to renew for five years.
And, and I mean, and service expectations are not met, the village always has the right to opt out of the agreement. I mean, it's something that I've had to commit to with a lot of the Strom communities, because we provided better customer service and better service than any company you'll ever get, probably forever. But we were a small mom-and-pop shop that had one person that answered the phone every day, and was able to deliver better customer service than really anybody could get. In this day and age, unfortunately, that really doesn't exist, and so the residents of Villa Park were given better service than they're getting today. But unfortunately, I personally don't have the ability to answer the phone like I used to for the residents. So while we do try to overcome that, we're working to make sure that the residents do understand that by getting them all uniform collection and being collected in the same manner, that they should see less issues, and plus, all of our trucks do have ThirdEye, which is like a technology, or we can look up video real-time to see if they're actually serviced. So they do have those things, which Strom didn't have.
Trusty Kumar.
There are certain houses that have consistent problems and not. Is there some kind of mapping? It might be just the locational mapping that you guys do in order to collect, that if there are certain streets or houses, that we can address that in, in, I mean, I understand nobody's answering the phone anyway. Nobody needs to anymore with technology, emails, and so on and so forth. It's a lot more automated than before. But we do need the ability to communicate quickly and get our trash picked up if it's left or, you know, forgotten. So you don't want to lose that service for sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, we definitely have a fully-staffed call center in Rosemont, you know, and they take all the calls. We have email addresses that can get answered almost immediately. If a resident is consistently missed, we do have route supervisors that will go out and meet the address and determine if it's a corner house that keeps getting skipped, putting a note on the account. And then another part of it that I didn't bring up is, like, all the LRS communities, they normally have an address list, and they're all routed. The Roy Strom towns didn't operate that way, so we didn't have all of your addresses in our system, and we still don't. So one of the big parts of like, I'll be honest, like River Forest was a community that we resigned, that was a Strom town. They were struggling with some service issues. Then we finally got all their addresses and put them into the LRS system, and then actually, like, when you would call and say, I've been missed three weeks in a row, well, on the Strom system, all I'm going to have is the Villa Park Max account. All 6333 homes, it'll say you were skipped. But now, in the new system, when we have all your addresses, it'll say, okay, 6333 North Villa Ave, it's the third week in a row they've been skipped. Now make sure there's a call order on that specific house, so the driver gets it on his specific route. So that, that is a big difference that I didn't think about until just now, but that would be a huge way to provide better service to you.
And it has been a complaint, is corner houses where, you know, once, you know, and then they've called several times, and have not gotten results.
Yeah, so, so that would be fixed just by getting the address list, which we could do even, you know, I could just ask to have that sent over, and then we could get it updated. It takes a couple weeks.
Right. Just cause that.
I'm at the corner of Park and Myrtle, and I understand that certain people have different experiences with garbage, but I have to say, when your company was doing it, I thought they did a great job. And the current gentleman who does our garbage does a great job. Couple weeks ago, I saw him out in the street with a broom, sweeping up the street, so he always puts the, you know, he's courteous, he puts the cans back, so nothing but a good experience.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the drivers are the same, too. There was a time, when we recently started, and I'll try to be brief, we started like three or four communities in the same month, in April, and, and we did have some of the drivers, because they wanted to switch to automated equipment. They have seniority, so they can, they can put their name on a list to move up. And a lot of drivers, they would prefer to use an automated truck rather than a manual one, which is what they have in Villa Park today. So unfortunately, a lot of them, some of them got promoted and went to that, and at that time, we did see some service issues, and so for that, I do apologize.
Couple of questions. So if you have a cart, and you fill your cart, and then you have another can extra, there's no charge for that, and your guy will take all of that?
Yeah, so they would, they would, just think about it now, is your 32-gallon can, just think that that 32-gallon can is now 96 gallons, and everything else is the exact same. So, yeah, they, they would still take the bulk item, you could still have, you know, if a resident says, hey, you know, I really don't want to wheel out anything else anymore in the future, you could, you could, what we normally do is we'll rent an additional cart to a resident if they would like it. They could still pull their 32-gallon can out, but if they're just like, hey, I want to rent one to have a couple more, we normally charge $3 a month, and, and that still covers that warranty, so if, if it breaks, we're going to replace it. But if we break your 32-gallon can, just by dumping it, normally, at that point, we consider it kind of like wear and tear, and we don't replace them anymore, because we've given you like the 96-gallon can. It doesn't happen that often, but that's when we kind of say, hey, look, the can's 10 years old, that you've been having there, and it's just kind of the wear and tear of that.
So by going over this, and then when you're providing everybody with the carts, is that a cost that's going to go to the village, or is that a cost that's going to go to each individual house, and how much is it going to be?
So if we went to all-car program, you know, normally, your, your contract price has been going up about 3% to 4% annually for the, the life of the contract. There may be a slight increase to that number, but it's more reflecting in the cost of, hate to use that diesel fuel comment that was made up on the last presentation, but there are some increase in costs of just doing business in our industry, specifically the diesel fuel costs have went from, when we looked at this last time, it was about $2.50 a gallon, right now, $4.75. So there's, there's a scotch of costs related more to fuel and commodities on recycling than realistically the cart. And what would really help on the cart purchase for us is to partner together on this grant, because the grant does take about a quarter, it adds about a quarter saving to the resident. So if, let's say, we were going to ask for a 5% increase or something, it would maybe offset that by a quarter, so.
Although the carts do help you with the efficiency, though.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's a lot quicker going down the street, instead of a guy going out every, you know, every step, taking out, so there's got to be some cost savings there.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So it does help with efficiency. So right now, when a lot of the communities that we have, you know, costs have gone up 8%, 9%, what this contract actually allows us to do is to get that efficiency pickup and have less of a request for a price increase. So a lot of the communities, like, just give you an example, I just renewed a contract that they had a price increase of 32% on fuel, on their waste pickup. So this, you have a good contract, this allows us to get an efficiency pickup, so I think that the ask is, is really, it's almost just keeping up with what your price increases were previously.
Trusty Slaw.
Yeah, I'd like to say, yeah, to comment that I currently utilize a 96-gallon cart, but I got elsewhere, and even though my home is smaller, meaning just me and my wife, I don't need to take that trash can out every week. It can go to a week, sometimes three, if it's not too hot out. And even at its fullest capacity, I found that tilting it back and rolling it out, it's a one-handed thing.
Oh, yeah. I, I had a picture on one of these slides, my daughter, she's six years old, she rolls it out, and then my son, who's two, he's trying to do it now, but he's just too small, you know, I got to help him out. So they're really easy to use.
It's, it's nice to have.
Yeah, and the nice thing, too, is it really, I can't stress enough how uniform and nice the community ends up looking, because right now, you know, you drive down the street, and there's 100 different cans, bins, and it's really a hodgepodge. So this just adds a lot of aesthetically pleasing look to the community, and it really isn't, and it's very minor, the cost that a resident is going to see to have this.
Just cause that.
When you do recycling, you try to sell the product once you collect it, and then based on market conditions, sometimes you can't sell it, right? Because there's no market for it. So you end up paying to dispose of that.
Well, we end up paying someone to take it, basically, someone to, someone to buy it, yeah, and that's where we're at right now.
So when you do pay for it, is that product, are you basically subsidizing that to the recycler, who's going to recycle it, or are you really, when the market is depressed, or you don't have a market to sell it, are you then just turning around and turning that into trash, and it goes into the landfill?
We've never had to do that. I mean, for the most part, the items that are recyclable are still recyclable. It's just finding the buyers for it, and sometimes you got to hang on to it for a little hang on to it for a little while as well. So that's the worst part of it. But overall, I mean, we factor in fluctuation because recycling commodities have always fluctuated. So, you know, you might get $120, $120 a ton for cardboard at the beginning of the year. And then maybe cardboard is not needed because things change. And then it changes again. And, you know, it could be down at $50 like right now. And then it could go back up to $200. So it's just, it just fluctuates. So it's not, the items that we're, that we pick up at everybody's house, they're unchanging. So, I mean, plastic, the only time that we really struggled was with mixed paper, which is the largest amount of recyclables. And that was during COVID. And COVID was a whole other story for the garbage industry. So.
But one thing, I know, and I know that having worked six years at a solid waste management district, this is a year, many years ago. But one of the key things, like any business, is building relationships. And if you've got a good relationships, you can get a better price or get a little take it for nothing when other people are paying. If you've developed relationships over a long period of time. It's like any, any vendor, regular customer. So that's, you know, I don't know. In our conversation, when we were driving around, that was one of the things that they talked about. So.
Yeah. I mean, this is definitely a good, I mean, listen, I don't, I don't own the company anymore, so I can be more frank than I used to be. But I think that this is a really fair conversation to have because I see a lot of the other companies are not nearly as aggressive on their pricing on the residential line of the business because it carries a high injury frequency rate. So a lot of the companies don't want to do this as much as they used to. But like I say, when we, when we went around and kind of showed, you know, the village what it looks like on the street, took them to our facilities, we want to continue this partnership. I personally was around when we first started the relationship with Villa Park. I've, I've been with this account, I've been with this community for, for a long time now. And I do see a lot of value keeping this together. I've always wanted to get carts in this community. It just seems like the appetite wasn't there in the past as much as it hopefully is today. And I don't, I don't think the ask is significant, quite frankly. I think that this is a fair conversation to have. And like I say, I'm just looking for, for the support of the board to hopefully keep this moving forward.
Any other questions? Okay. What I'd like to do then is get a consensus on the board to just go ahead with the, the five-year contract. Trust Kummer?
Yeah, I would be in favor of the five-year, five-year contract. I just wanted to build in more of a customer service aspect into the contract. So just certain customer service aspects, which we already discussed, I would like it written somewhere in the contract.
So negotiate a five-year contract with LRS extension with specific community, with specific customer service targets and solutions.
Yeah, certain, yeah, certain things like the address list certainly that you talked about is an important factor. Things that are already the, the 10-year renewal with the, the garbage cans, things like that, the five years.
Insert, yeah.
No, the 10-year, the 10-year, the 10-year.
Warranty, absolutely.
Warranty, the garbage can, so on and so forth.
Yeah, with some wording in there about customer service.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, we can even provide some language that we've used in other communities that were concerned.
Okay. Okay. Trust Kummer.
Consensus?
Consensus, please.
Okay.
Torquay.
Yes. Trusty Kozar?
Yes.
Trusty Salala?
Yes.
Trusty Murphy?
Yes.
Trusty Corkery?
No.
Trusty Kumar?
Yes.
Trusty Patrick?
Yes.
President Cassell?
Yes. Okay, so we will move ahead with that.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay, do we have any public comments on our items tonight?
I'll be very brief. I know you're away over time. I appreciate them, the board extending the contract for Roy Strom, or excuse me, LRS. I'd just say they've been a great partner, George, and now LRS has been a great partner. They facilitated a tour of their facility. They help us with spring sweep, with, with the pumpkin smash. And whenever we need educational material, they've been there for us. So I appreciate that. I think it's a good decision. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, bud. Okay, anyone else?
I just want clarity on the Rec Center.
Could you state your name, please?
Cheryl Tucker.
Thank you.
You are having another meeting, CWO meeting on the Rec Center, correct?
Correct.
You have not made a decision and you are coming up with some other financial decisions for the people of the village. So we can understand where you're heading towards.
Yeah, we're going to investigate other, other funding options.
Right.
And then we will come back and discuss it again.
And then you will come back to this. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn our committee of the whole. Trusty Slaw, second. Trusty Patrick, you all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. And we will adjourn at 7:40 and we'll come back, we'll open up at 7:45, our next, the board meeting.